Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 10 o'clock meeting, September 19th, 2023. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mute your phones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Oh, merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for public comment?
Roll call.
Oops, sorry, roll call.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Here.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Excused.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Here. Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board or in our other business before the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment for those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment for those who are pre-registered for a WebEx link and currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do. I'll go ahead and call out the first three. Debbie Mans, followed by Mike Peters, followed by Mark Khan.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Debbie Mans. As indicated, I serve as the City Manager on behalf of the City of Newport Ritchie. I'm here to address two of your agenda items. They are noted as C eight and C nine interlocal agreements between the City of Newport Ritchie and Pasco County related to the Town and Country Villas Neighborhood Improvement Project. I'd like to initiate my comments by indicating that the City of Newport Ritchie has enjoyed a perpetuous relationship with Pasco County for a very long period of time, and I thank you for that. We have not always been on the winning end, so to speak, of our deals, but we have always felt very respected, and we have always felt that we negotiated in good faith. That being said, the interlocal agreement before you today is the result of discussions that have ensued since 2018. It is the potential of a joint project to address a multitude of problems that exist within an enclave, which is basically a four-block area located within unincorporated Pasco County but served by city utilities. The purpose of the project, in large part, is to provide respectable, affordable housing. It is to improve resiliency of public infrastructure against future storms, rising sea levels and other disasters, to reduce public health risks and environmental contamination, to reduce the cost of providing public services, and to incentivize the development of this housing. The original project partners involved, in addition to the county and the city, are U.S. Water, People Places LLC, a real estate development design company, and Habitat for Humanity, who has since sold their interests. That being said, no one more than I recognize the importance of budgeting. I know that $2 million is important to you. I know that you have already made the commitment for $200. There are 185 lots in this neighborhood that are substandard. Nothing has happened in five years, except that slum and blight has deteriorated. Please allow the city, by appropriating this $2 million, to be your project partner and address this substandard condition by installing what will now be a more-than-two-million-dollar infrastructure and our investment in the neighborhood to provide decent housing for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Peters, followed by Mark Khan, followed by Alfred Calucci.
Good morning, Chairman, and good morning, Commission. I'm happy to be able to address you today. My name is Mike Peters. I'm addressing you as a longtime Pasco County resident since '88 and a small business owner and employer, as well as I am now in my third-year term as City Councilmember of the City of Newport Ritchie. So I would also like to address the project that our City Manager, Ms. Mans, outlined and spoke about. I'd just like to tell you that we appreciate the opportunity to partner with you on a project like this. I think in years past, shown we provided to be good partners with you on projects. And there's an opportunity here for you to fulfill things that have been talked about for years. I can recall back in the mid-2000s and so, I had an opportunity to serve on several advisory committees here for the county, Sign Ordinance Review Committee, Comprehensive Plan Review, and so forth. And I can recall back during that time, there was, at that time, discussions about the redevelopment of the U.S. 19 corridor. And, you know, that's been talked about and revisited and worked on for a number of years. Perhaps not as much progress that we've all liked to see. The city, we've done our, we've tried to do what we can along that corridor, within our borders, and it's just not the U.S. 19, but it's those areas that are immediately, you know, east and west of 19 that need some work. And this is one such neighborhood, and it gives us an opportunity to maybe take that steps to fulfill some of that. Those folks in that area have had substandard services for many years. The city, we've stepped in at time to time, whether it's police services or fire services necessary to do that. It's obviously proximity to many important city residents and businesses, and this provides an opportunity for the county to fulfill some of their long-wanted projects, to enhance those areas and take us as a partner, so you can basically get this as a bargain with our stepping in and helping you. So I'd like you to consider the agreement that had been placed before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Khan, followed by Alfred Calucci, followed by John Russell.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Khan. I moved to Pasco County in 2014. I'm a resident of District Two. I built a house in the Windsor Development, located off of State Road 56 and Meadow Point Boulevard. In 2021, D.R. Horton, along with Forestar, came in and started developing the Winfield-Wood Creek Development on our eastern boundary. My neighbors and myself went to them and asked if they would indeed leave a land barrier there to protect us. They said they would. If you notice on Slide 5, the original plat map that they put out from the input indicates a Type A buffer between their development and ours. In 2022, they silently removed that buffer, and when we contacted them about that, they said they decided to put a fence up instead. As you can see in Slide 7, they sent this picture to our CDD attorney indicating that a fence would be along the entire eastern boundary. The Windsor Development is to the left of that line. Slide 8 will show you that they lied about that. They basically stopped the fence 100 yards short of that, creating a blind alley and allowing people to ingress and trespass into the Windsor Development unseen. Slide 9 shows you what the land buffer looked like before. They bulldozed to the property line with bushes and trees and a safety area there. Slide 10 shows you what it looks like when they got finished doing that. Slide 11. This is 17 feet, this feet is 17 feet from the actual boundary line. People are using this blind alley unseen to enter into the Windsor Development. Our development has children in it. Okay. Slide 12. This individual, who was a worker over there, decided to come and walk around our community. Slide 13. These four men decided they would just come into and fish in our pond, and at the time, my wife was in the back continually staring at her at the time while she was out with A deputy was actually, came out this time, this is like the 20th time I've called them, and he reprimanded them, and then he told me there's nothing that can be done about it until, and that until somebody puts up a fence, and it's just going to get worse when people move in there. Slide 14. This is the code that the developers are using against us, and it has a caveat on it that districts, that developments in the same districts do not have to buffer. I am asking the Board to change this code and make it retroactive to January 1st. I'm asking the Board to contact D.R. Horton and make this right. Okay? You need to protect the taxpayers and the citizens that elected you. This is going to cause a problem, not just for me, but for other people as well. Thank you very much for your time.
And sir, before you leave, Matt Campbell is ready to talk with you. I appreciate the emails last night. D.R. Horton did respond to me last night as well as this was coming up, so Matt Campbell's got more information for you to talk to, and hopefully we can make this, get resolved one way or the other.
Thank you, Chairman.
One quick question, is Windsor a gated community?
Windsor is a gated community. Winfields is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Matt Campbell, Matt, raise your hand. He's right in the back there, sir.
All right. Next, the next individual signed up is Alfred Calucci, followed by John Russell, and followed by, I think it's George, oh, George Romagnoli, I can know that name. If you could please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
My name is Alfred Calucci. I live at 9109 Cotswold Way in Heritage Lake. That's Cambridge Commons II subdivision. I'm on the committee for the Oaks Park MSBU from Heritage Lake. Last August, we met with Commissioner Jack Mariano about this project, and we were told he was going to recommend that the change from the park zoning and have the property considered a surplus real property. That is happening now, and we thank him for that. However, we're not against the sale, but we'd like to be able to monitor it. Two items of concern are that the property should be sold to build 100, could be sold to build 100 homes or 100 single-family townhouses. We prefer the single-family homes, of course. And our second question is the 60-foot easement that's being considered in the rear of the property, which goes from the east side to the west, which of course ends at Sebring, which is in Heritage Lake. We're concerned, and a lot of people are concerned, that will this become a road eventually, or is it going to be just an easement for utility services and nothing but that? There's also a body of water before you get to Sebring, and if that's the case, is that going to be bridged? This is part of, is it part of the plan? That's all I have, and I want to thank you for giving me the permission to be here. Also, I have the permission of our President Judith Wolf, who is out of town, otherwise she would have been here. So thank you for giving me that time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to receive.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Calucci.
Mr. John Russell, followed by George Romagnoli, followed by Karen Stokes.
Copy is of what I'm going to say.
Okay. Bring him to the clerk.
Do you'd like to?
Have a motion, some move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm the one with one vocal card left, so bear with me. My name is John Russell, and my wife and I live at 9652 Cavendish Court, Pasco County, Florida. I'm here to represent both myself and my wife. We went to, we want to express our sincere concerns regarding the consent agenda item C 20, the reclassification of the Oaks Park property as surplus real property. This property is the subject of a municipal service benefit unit approved by the Commission on June 24th, 2014. These 41 acres are very special to us, and I am quoting directly from the agreement or ordinance. Section 7 MSBU will consist of the provision of a neighborhood, park, and/or open space and related facilities, including but not limited to stormwater ponds. Section 8, that's ironic, funds for the services and facilities authorized under Section 7 of this ordinance shall be provided to special assessments, which shall be levied and collected and enforced in accordance with the uniform method. Special assessments shall be collected annually from the owner of each parcel of land in the MSBU and shall not exceed the cost providing the service and facilities described in Section 7. This document was signed by Commissioner Mariano on June 24th, 2014. My wife and I did not move into our current address until November of 2019. No one in our community ever told us about an MSBU until early 2021. At a Commission meeting in 2021, I asked Commissioner Mariano why this MSU had not been acted upon and turned over to the tax collector's office. Commissioner Mariano was, I believe, being completely honest when he simply responded, "I don't know. I'll look into it." Many meetings have passed since then. Last year, I was told by the Commission, at a Commission meeting, that the delay was because we have to recalculate the correct number of ERUs, equivalent residential units, to be assessed. This is being turned over to the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Department. Now, here's a big if for you folks. If you had started the MSBU in 2014, put it on the tax rolls in 2015, eight years' worth of assessments would have already been collected. That's well over 50% of the $3 million. This is not our fault, and clearly something in the county's doing there. Let's get back on task here and get that MSBU over to Mike Fasano. Thank you very much for listening.
We have George Romagnoli, followed by Karen Stokes, followed by Alan Rose.
Nice to be up here again. My name is George Romagnoli. I have the honor of working for this county for 25 years, all in community development, 15 years as its director. I'm now the Senior Vice President of Neighbor Lending Partners, a community development financial institution that funds affordable and workforce housing, and for six years I was chairman of the Florida Housing Coalition, which is the principal advocacy group for housing in Florida. I'm not speaking for them, though. I'm speaking for myself, a resident of Pasco County for most of my life, with knowledge of how affordable housing has developed. When Live Local became law, I was skeptical, even with increased density and height allowances. How could a developer build affordable housing without subsidy? I decided to underwrite a Live Local project, and I found out I was wrong. In areas of moderate property values, Live Local works. In most of Holiday, Port Ritchie, Newport Ritchie, Date City Hudson, it will work. In areas of higher values, like the interstate in 56 or the Gulf Coast, it would be difficult. In really high-value areas, like downtown St. Pete or Tampa's Bay Shore, it would be impossible. I am not optimistic in your desire to amend the bill this year. Major changes will be difficult as long as the current legislative leadership is in place. I understand why you want to exempt the county, especially in industrially-zoned areas, but I think we need to look at this bill and why it was done. The law was written in a vacuum without most, without most of affordable housing community involved. The development community was involved. Time is money. Land is constrained by zoning and land use that was developed two generations ago or more. I'm an advocate for affordable and workforce housing. I have a master's degree in planning, but I do not like local predemption in this bill. But I understand why it was there, and we have a massive need for affordable housing in this county and the state as a whole. Your Community Development Department is doing a good job developing affordable housing projects, but is not enough. If developers accept your subsidy, they will have to accept your rules. Of the three counties in our region, Pinellas, Hillsborough, and Pasco, we're the only county that provides no subsidy to affordable housing with local funds. You're not going to stop them from building Live Local, but on the site, but you may be able to shape the project to make it mixed-use or have less density. Housing goals, jobs, construction has a large multiplier of any investments you can make. Look at creating a revolving loan fund with general funds, as Hillsborough County has done. One more point. I know you're asking developers who are rezoning their properties to put deed restrictions as to remain commercial or industrial. The first developer that says no, and you deny that rezoning, you have a big Burt Harris lawsuit on your hands. I would hate to see the county sued. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Karen Stokes, followed by Alan Rose, followed by Garth, is it Ashnall?
Good morning to you all. Seven years ago, my husband and I moved to Heritage Lake. We enjoy living there since we have moved.
Name and address.
I'm from South Jersey.
Name and address.
Pardon me?
I get your name and your address, please.
Of course. My name is Karen Stokes. I live at 4992 Prince George Circle, Heritage Lake, and Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34655. At the beginning of this meeting, we had a prayer, and the prayer included a prayer for every living creature. To me, that includes the creatures that live in our wetlands and in properties that have not been developed. Prior to moving to this Heritage Lake, we lived in a place called Hammonton, and it was in South Jersey. There's such a thing in South Jersey called Pine Lands Commission, and the Pine Land Commission includes certain areas that are not allowed to be developed because they are sensitive to the environment. If certain animals or certain fauna or flora are in this area, no one is allowed to develop in that area. I think it's a good law that South Jersey has. I think it would behoove us to keep properties as much as natural to the Florida scenery as possible. Right now, we Right now, we have more car washes within a two-mile radius than there are cars. I've seen car washes being built with hideous-looking vacuum cleaner hoses coming down that look like they're from some kind of alien movie. It's ridiculous. It's horrible, and it does not do justice to our beautiful Florida environment. So, I will say that I am thankful for the people that who do participate in talking to you and speaking to you about the people who live in Heritage Lake. We are proud people who live there, and we do acknowledge the existence of the beautiful surroundings in which we live. So, I am concerned about any properties that might be developed that don't necessarily need to be developed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please don't clap. Please don't clap.
Alan Rose, followed by Garth, I think it's Ashnall, followed by just simply Nancy is the first name.
Good morning. Alan Rose, 10221 Hilltop Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34654. Today, it's coastal. My interest has always been coastal. I've been coming to you for years. Recently, I've made some discoveries, and I'd like to share. Last month, I sent to the county over $250 million in available funding for coastal projects, strictly coastal. And this month, so far, I have an extra $45 million available. Come to find out that what's impeding this is that we don't have the staffing to enable us to take care of the coastal property. So, I'm retiring. I'm going to bring something forward, and what you're going to hear about in the future will be Pasco County Coastal Improvement Council to handle what the county is unable to do, the short-staffing. When you see this, just know that we're friends. We're not going to be adversarily. We're going to help support Pasco, but our focus is going to be coastal. We have so much needs out there, and just as an insight, everyone knows that I did a little work at Hudson Beach a few years ago. Since I did that work prior to that project that I did, not approved by anybody, just did it on my own time. That was the issue, but used to have restrictions every month. And since that project, we've had one restrictive day, month, week, per year. So, it worked. We can do things, and it can be cost-effective, and it can be done on the larger scale for our 20-some-odd-mile coast. For the projects that I see in the future, what I'm used to seeing is a million dollars a mile. So, between $20 and $30 million, we'll take care of our coast properly. And I'm going to step forward and work to get that done for everyone. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, let you know, because we actually did have money available, and we didn't go after it because we don't have the staffing. So, in the future, we'll work on the staffing. It may be aside as a nonprofit, but we'll work on it, and we'll work together to make it happen.
Alan, if you would get with Sonia, I want to work with you on that nonprofit. Home Assassin did the same thing up there. We tried to modify that a bit a few years ago. We didn't come together, but if we got a leader like you out there in the community with your experience, hopefully can be. In this year's budget, we do have a C-grant agent, and we are looking for a Resiliency Officer as well, so we are making that step, but I would love to work with you on that nonprofit.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And thanks for all you do, Alan.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We have Garth Ashnall, followed by Nancy, followed by Tom Summers.
And you got it close. It's Garth Ashpaw.
So close.
4723 Portland Manor Drive in Heritage Lake. And thanks for the opportunity to address C-20. First of all, the HOA does not speak for a lot of us in this room today. We oppose C-20. I'm a new resident. I've only been in Heritage Lake now for two months, but I didn't move in to have the kind of distraction over my shoulder that's only going to be a block away from me, from this kind of construction and this kind of development. Anybody who's been to that property and looked at it out there can see that what we're talking about here is environmentally-sensitive territory. Tampa right now is getting federal money to maintain its green canopy. As I drive down Little Road, Pasco County is doing a good job of tearing it up. We don't want this kind of stuff in our back door. I know that's not something the developers like to hear, but we would appreciate it if you would live up to your promises and make that area a park, and the folks who live in Heritage Lake will remember one way or the other. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
No. Please don't clap.
No clapping. We've asked you not to clap, please. All right. I've got Nancy, I don't know last name, followed by Tom Summers, followed by Barb Ross.
I feel like you can try what they do in the state. They can wave and support.
Keep trying, actually.
Hello. Nancy Exte, and I live in Heritage Lake. This is the email I sent to the five commissioners yesterday.
Ma'am, could you take your address for the record?
4715 Portland Manor Drive. I'm next-door neighbor to Garth.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I've been coming to these meetings at the government center since 2011, back when I was young and beautiful, and you can see what's happened in all those years.
Nothing's changed.
Okay. That piece of land has been the center of my nightmares for all these years. Lawyers, hydrologists, civic engineers, tax collectors, governors, and a whole gamut of your constituents have been fighting for years to keep that as open space. We want to save the surrounding subdivisions, all the subdivisions, from flooding, traffic impact, and danger. So, we bought the land from Mr. Scherer in 2014. In 2015, we got the MSBU. It's 2023, folks. We've gone completely, circled back to the beginning. We have the same problems we were talking about back in 2011 we're going to be talking about now. I have a horrible feeling this is a done deal. I'm very disappointed in you. You know, we are your constituents. You should be looking out for us, not the impact fees or whatever else you want. And this is the last thing in my email. There's only one thing that's a given: We all vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
No clapping.
So, Tom Summers, followed by Barb Ross, followed by Marlita Cassiter.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Tom Summers. I live at 9903 Kingsport Avenue, Newport Ritchie. I'm here today for the C-41 Riverside Oak, 41 acres. As previous...
C-20?
C-20, yes, ma'am. As stated before, we've been playing around with this since 2014. 2021 and '22, we were talking about it, that we were going to change it to an MSBU and not go with any more construction up in that area. The area is a wetland, environmentally-sensitive, and it's just someplace that I don't think we need to have additional housing built. Look at the fiasco that's about to happen down here on Little Road. It's just going to be a nightmare for the communities on the western part of Pasco County, and our quality of life is one of the things that we champion in Pasco County, that we want to see always be on a good side. So, this is something that, it may, you know, it's something that may be a small step, but it's something that we need to try and keep under control because of the, we don't want a rampant development just bowling us over. And again, everybody in Pasco County, quality of life will suffer from it. Our Heritage Lake President is not speaking for a majority of the residents in Heritage Lake. We, most of us, do not want to see that area developed primarily because of the traffic and the environmental area. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barb Ross, followed by Marlita Cassiter, followed by Brenda Broderick.
Good morning. I'm Barb Ross. I live at 4040 Oaklawa Lane, Newport Ritchie, in Riverside Village Estates. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and I'm here because, I moved here eight years ago, and I had been involved in city government for many years, and I was a real estate agent for over 30 years. P&amp;Z was like old hat. It's what I did all the time. And I moved to that community because I did a lot of research, and I heard about the fact that the land had been planned to be developed, and that the residents in all the surrounding communities came together and talked about it, and it was resolved. It was not going to happen. And so, eight years ago, I was like, yay, this is the place for me, because I'm a wildlife person. I love it. It's why I chose to live there. It's why most of the residents in that area chose to live there. But I started hearing about issues going on, and the next thing you know, I became the HOA president because nobody wanted to do it. And so, I invited then-Commissioner Mr. Mike Wells to come and speak to us, because all these residents were under the impression they were going to be paying back, and just like a lot of people have said here, the plan was always there to pay back. And so, residents in our community wanted to pay back, and we had Mr. Wells come and speak to us, and he said, "We've gotten grants. Everything's okay. Don't need to worry about paying right now. There would be no development over there." And then, we had talked about the land on the other end of our subdivision and promised that there would be no development there for anything except for single families similar to us. Well, we all know what happened to that. And so, when we talk about what was promised years ago, it's like talking to the wall because people don't seem to remember that these promises were made. And the residents were willing to work with the county and try to get the park established, but no one came to us to fulfill the need. And as a gentleman said, it would have been paid off partially by now if we had done it in a timely manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marlita Lassiter, Brenda Broderick, followed by Miriam Butler.
I'm here again before you. My name is Marlita Lassiter, and I live at 9457 Nile Drive, and I live in a position where I look at the 41 acres of the Oaks Park every day. And I must tell you that the wildlife is very varied. There are a lot of endangered species now occupying that area because of the development in Starkey and all the other areas surrounding us. Some history that I haven't heard mentioned was, originally, this was going to be a golf course when it was being developed by the developers in the 80s. Then, in 2008, we defeated condominiums that were supposed to be built on that property. And the reason for the neighborhood concern is that a lot of the areas in Riverside Village are in A-zone flood zones. I happen to be an AE flood zone with a 50-foot right-of-way that has a canal that takes all of the water from Heritage Lakes, Riverside Village, Riverside Estates, and also other areas that are draining into that canal. So, it's quite a concern when you see half of your backyard covered in water. I have seen some cleanup of that canal, but not enough. And the drainage under Rivers, under Amazon Drive is not adequate. It backs up. That whole area floods. So, one of my questions to you is, how are we going to develop that land when they raise those properties higher than the surrounding area? What are we going to do with flooding then? You know, I've lived there for 20 years, and I'm a resident of Pasco County for 55 years. I just got a cancellation notice from my homeowner's insurance because of flooding and high claims history in Florida. So, one of the things that we need to consider is what's going to happen once that land is developed. I was an officer of 5533 Strong. We hired an attorney to get that MSBU enacted, and I've worked with many of you, and the thing at this time is, it's not a feasible idea to continue developing in Pasco County. When you go out Highway 54 and Highway 56 and look at what's happening, we're in a quandary. So, at this time, I would say that the 132 signatures I submitted from the folks in my area all wanted the MSBU enacted.
Thank you.
So, I would consider again what's happening in Pasco County and to your homeowners who are voting in the 2024, 23, 24 election. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brenda Broderick, followed by Miriam Butler, followed by Doug Carroll.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to commend you for the wonderful work you've been doing with Pasco County. I know it's a very difficult task to be in public service. I'm here today to speak on regards to my community, Jasmine Lakes, which is Mr. Mariano's district. And my name is Brenda Broderick. I live at 10401 Alice M. Court in Port Ritchie, 34668. We have an ongoing problem, which has been persistent for 15, 20 years, with the need for the fountain to be working to aerate what is a retention pond, according to the departments that I have discussed issues with this body of water. I've requested for an appointment to speak with you, Jack, numerous times, with your secretary, and promised that I would have a personal appointment with you to go over the problems that I have, that my community discusses with me as I'm walking around the lake, and to no avail yet. So, this ongoing problem, it is definitely not a reflection of the mission, vision, and goals of Pasco County. And I have attended the Action Planning Committee numerous times over the year. There is no representative for our district, which is your district, Jack, and I cannot attend these meetings as an advocate for our community. I'm a doctoral student with honors. I'm, my last year of my program, and it's very important that I complete this and stay focused on my task. So, I'm here to discuss the economic burden associated with the continuous automobile accidents around the lake that is associated with property damage to our homes and the increase of property insurance, the increase of automobile insurance, and the rising costs associated with these accidents, associated with the health care. So, the economic loss is, I'm sure, in the millions, because if you take the collected data over the past, we've lived here since 2001, on how many times cars have crashed into the light poles and how many times cars have driven into the lake, then I'm sure that would be somewhere in the millions. I'm requesting that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. I would like to know more about what's going on with the restriping and painting of our road, which was promised to us at the beginning of the year in an action committee meeting, the guardrails, the trees that need to be trimmed, which is community property, county property. What can we do? Our homes around the lake and Day Springs Academy are half-million-dollar homes. You know, we're encroaching up to the appraisal levels of these homes being in the half-a-million-dollar range around the lake. We're not a blighted community, but we're becoming a blighted community every time a car runs into our home, or I had a car that... Or I had a car that ran into my property.
Brenda, time's up. We've got to wrap it up. If you would, would you talk to Branford? And Branford, Jasmine Lakes, were the sidewalks going to go in? And we talked about doing the pond there. Would you kind of like tell her what we're at? And if you could, I know I had Ven Cat looking at the traffic as far as the study, as far as accidents, whatever. If you could kind of review that with her. And Brenda, I'd have this an appointment up with you as well.
Thank you. Have a fantastic day, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Miriam Butler, followed by Doug Carroll, followed by Mike Bloom.
I started to say, is it good morning? Yes, still a good morning. I'm Miriam Butler. I live at 4347 Genesee Lane in Newport Richie, 34655. I'm speaking as both the president of the HOA, the Riverside Village Estates HOA, and also as a longtime resident of that community, who originally, who has been involved in the debate over this property since the beginning of the controversy. It began because we objected to hundreds of apartments being put onto that property. Frankly, if it had been another kind of development more in keeping with our homes, there probably might not have been that kind of outcry. But the communities all around rose up and thought what we knew would be traffic, drainage, congestion, loss of wildlife, all of those reasons that you've already heard about today. That that would be affected by developing that land with apartments. And then low and behold, in the process of all of this debate, we had the backing of some very influential people. Mike Fasano, Richard Corcoran, Mike Wells. They were all involved in helping the county come to the decision to purchase that property from the developer. So time and again, we have been convinced that this wonderful solution was really going to happen. It's encoded with ordinance numbers and resolution numbers into the Pasco County Minutes and proceedings and documents. To reneg on that now and come back, as another speaker said, full circle. We're right back where we started. And all of those efforts of residents who fought and gave up their time and reasoned and cared about this project are, frankly, we wonder, are you waiting for us to just move away or die? We really want, everyone in my neighborhood wants this to be the park. We certainly do not want to go back to any development concepts like multifamily dwellings. But, so speaking on behalf of my community, we hope you will keep your promise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I was saying.
No clapping, please.
I think I was saying the next person's name wrong. I think it's Doris Carroll, not Doug Carroll. Sorry about that. And then followed by Doug Bloom, and then Rainey Ruthig.
Hi, thank you. Doris Carroll, 5244 Hawk Drive in Holiday, 34690. I've been here before. I'm a registered nurse of 40 years, currently licensed in Florida. And I'm here only two and a half years, but my mother has been here for 30 years. I care for her and live with her now. She's 89 years old. I'm here representing the Democratic Environmental Caucus of Florida. I'm also, and I'm the current vice president. I'm also the past union president of the Illinois Nurses Association and chief union steward at my hospital for 1,500 nurses at University of Illinois. Why is that important? I'm used to being an organizer. And I'm here today because of some of the things that I've talked about before, but mainly about C-26, which is on the consent agenda. And that's the, sorry, First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement regarding the cultural resources support for complete design for Pasco County and Clot River Park with the amount of $268, $335. So I also represent concerned citizens of Pasco County. We have presented to you in the past a petition of over 1,800 signatures. Right now, it's at 3,500 signatures. We had a drum circle event at the park on Sunday. We are concerned about this project overall. We're concerned because, for instance, the current indigenous mound that is now considered of no cultural significance. It's not listed as a temple mound anymore, or a midden, or a burial mound. But we know there's controversy about that. It was witnessed, a person was riding their electric bike on the mound on Sunday. There is only posts and ropes between the posts to prevent the public from disturbing that mound. We need to do better. We need to protect our sacred lands. You're planning to spend almost $8 million over the next two years to redesign the park and to, I've been told, the mound will not be disturbed. It's already being disturbed. And lastly, I want to say, I want to know who approved a private citizen to give them a permit to dig at the park and to film a History Channel episode? How does a private citizen get that permit? He's looking for treasure. So hopefully, he won't be there when the Phase 3 starts. Thank you.
Mike Bloom, followed by Rainey Ruthig.
Good morning. And with all due respect, I come before you this morning. As a property owner, my wife and I at Heritage Lakes, and we're concerned about the 41 Oaks property there. And you've already heard about the traffic management issues, the wildlife, the water issues, which are all relevant and there.
And so your name and address for the record?
Michael K. Bloom. I'm sorry, my wife Nancy and I, forgive me.
And your address?
9724 Cavendish Court, Newport Richie, Heritage Lakes.
Thank you.
And you've heard all that about those issues and the C-20. As new property owners, when we got there a couple of years ago, it was such a big deal. In 2014, the establishment of the MSBU. And I'm here this morning to just ask the county to please reestablish that deal that was already made and etched in stone. I notice on the agenda today, it says requested to declare surplus real property. Oaks at Riverside, no funding. And as you go back and read that deal that was made, please reconsider. It is so important in this day and age to mean what we say and say what we mean. And I, with all due respect, I make that request. Thank you.
Then Rainey Ruthig.
Good morning. My name's Rainey Ruthig. I live at 4428 Oclawah Lane in Riverside Village Estates. Of course, I'm here on the C-20. I'm not going to respond with all the same concerns and issues that we all agree with. I bought my property in 2020 with my husband after retiring after 29 years of military service. Both him and I did. We bought our property because they said it was going to be a park. But one thing I want to address is an article that they said in April in 2022 on WFLA. And it says that Pasco County firefighters sound the alarm over shortage response times. And in this article, April of 2022, it talks about our critical infrastructure, that we don't have the response times, that it takes 10 minutes for firefighters to come to fires, and it's taking them over 15 minutes to get there. A house can burn down, they say in this article, in 10 minutes. And the other thing that concerns me is that, and every, any given day, excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous. At any given day, there's 20 minutes an ambulance isn't available. And in this article, they say it's only going to get worse. But we continue to develop. From two miles out, you are building 35,000 homes on Platte. Tanglewood is being built on. You are building homes on Alvernon. Old 54 is now getting built homes. Mitchell. And then I just read that, of course, the Blueberry Farms is now getting built on. When's it going to stop? Can we get our infrastructure to finally build to the population? And then if we need more places, continue building? Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service and your husband's service.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have signed up. We did have one person sign up via WebEx, but they are not logged in.
Okay. All right, anyone else from the audience like to speak? Please come forward.
My name's William Gillis. I live at 9841 Alvernon Drive. Subdivision that we're talking about, the parks, the Oak Parks, is on Amazon Drive, just north of our subdivision. Groundhog's Day, I guess. I don't know why this is, I guess I do know why. Because we see new faces. Every time we see new faces, we revisit this on the board. People, the Commissioners made a promise back in 2014 that this, we were going to pay for this park, which we agreed to, okay? So basically, we had a contract with the Commissioners to purchase this park, even though we wouldn't maintain ownership. Now you throw a wrench into the works again, and you want to make this surplus land. Well, I'm here to tell the residents that if they make this a surplus land, chances are, we will no longer have any say in the use of this piece of property. We started this fight based on all the comments you heard earlier. And those, and I understand those who are hoping to escape this $135 a year on their taxes for the next 15 years. I appreciate that. But you're going to pay a higher price. Because when they build anything on that property, let's say best-case scenario, 50 homes. Remember, they're building another 40, or have permission to build another 45 townhomes just south of that area. All of this ties into River Chase, Southern Oaks, Riverside Village, and Heritage Lakes. And if you don't think that's going to affect you, wait till they open Amazon into Southern Oaks. Wait till the traffic from all those new houses go down Genesee Avenue, down into River Chase, and then out through Southern Oaks. People, $135 a year is cheap compared to what we're going to face if they get their way and make this surplus property. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to public comment? I'm going to close public comment. At this moment, we would normally go right into our resolutions. But I'm going to ask that we skip the resolutions for a minute. Let's do our consent agenda, take the polls, and then address this item with.
Happy to.
Happy to go that way? Okay, so let's go to the consent agenda. I have several items to be pulled. We're pulling C-8, C-9, C-16, C-20, C-21, C-23, C-25. C-42 is withdrawn. C-43, C-56, and C-66 is withdrawn.
Mr. Chair, I believe C-25 was no longer going to be pulled. Okay.
C-20?
That is correct.
Okay, C-20 is not pulled?
C-25.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, did you say C-16? I think you skipped it.
I said C-16.
You did?
Yes, he did.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda? See, none may have a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the only agenda item I want to touch right now is just C-20. If we could pull that agenda item to discuss.
And Commissioner, if I may?
Commissioner Starkey.
Because I was intimately involved with this. So I want to appreciate everyone coming out today. I want to go back in time to the history of this property. This piece of land, it was pretty much the last piece of an area that was developed in the 70s and 80s, a little bit in the 90s. Southern Oaks, River Crossing, Calumet's Crossing, Riverside Village, and some other communities in there. This last piece of land actually was zoned for multifamily. And when the developer came to the county commission with only site plan approval requirements, because it was, already had the zoning it needed to put a multifamily project in there, everyone got in an uproar. And if you recall, Commissioner, because we had this, some very contentious county commission meetings, that legally, we had to approve that site plan. And when, at the first vote, when the site plan was voted down, we had three Commissioners who were personally sued. And Commissioner Mariano, you changed your vote and followed the law. And we approved that site plan. But immediately after that, I called the development attorney. I did not know the person who was buying that land at that time. And asked him if we could work with the 5,500-strong community. And if the developer would be interested in selling, would he let us work out a deal? And that is how that deal came about. And in meeting with those 5,500, the folks who represented the 5,500, we had a great big meeting here. And they agreed that they would rather have an MSBU and a park than apartments in the middle of their community. Now, we, you know, when it's multifamily, we can't say if it's for purchase or for rent. But so it was, but the developer had the intent of building apartments. So we did that. Some other political forces came into being. And we stalled putting that MSBU together because there was a hope that some state money could come in and help pay for that $3 million assessment. And he tried. He tried two years in a row, but it never made it through. So that $3 million that the taxpayers of Pasco County put out has been tied up in that land ever since. And every time we had a new Commissioner or a new county administrator, I always drove them by that property and gave them the history of what was there and what was going on. It wasn't my district, but now it is. Some other history, I think, is important. Because some of that land was Starkey land that was purchased for that, those developments. That whole area was developed as what's known as a sub-DRI. If that had been done in the normal way, they would have had to have parkland set aside. They would have had a different kind of road network. And if you recall what DRRs are like, Trinity is a DRI, Meadow Oaks is a DRI. There's a lot of requirements that come with a development that big. But this was kind of done in a very unusual way. Because I have a home right near there, and I drive that area all the time. There is not one park. There was a little teeny park that River Crossing had, or someone had, but I don't even think it's used anymore. There is no park in that, in any of that land for kids to play. I have watched the friends of my kids that they grew up with play football in the dry retention ponds. My kids went and played soccer in those dry retention ponds. So I think, you know, we have this here to surplus today. But we don't have to, we don't have to build on every freaking piece of land in this county. And, and this is a chance.
Ms. Starkey, watch your adjectives, please.
I've gotten in trouble for this. This is an opportunity for a community that never had a park to have their own park, where they can go walk their dogs, where their kids can play, where they can go just enjoy nature, right in the middle of really that development. I personally think it's a win-win. I know that they're paying for it themselves, like we chose to do in Gulf Harbors. We have our own park. And it is not going to be a county park. It is a private park for that community. But if you were to buy a house today, someone tell me, what is the park impact fee that you would be paying if you bought a new house in January, starting January 1st? $4,000?
$3,500.
$3,500, you would add on to the cost of your house for a park. So you're getting a private park for $1,000. So you're getting a private park for $135 for whatever, you know, for much less. So I am willing to just go ahead and let's just go on with MSBU if I have the support from my fellow commissioners.
And Commissioner Starkey, I wanna say, you summarized that magnificently, very accurately. I mean, couldn't have said it better. So... and I apologize, because I knew this was District Four years ago.
I know, it's flopped around.
I didn't know the change happened, so I apologize, because I had... I've had conversations with a recent developer that wanted to come forward to build single-family homes, and I entertained. But I didn't know it was your district. I know Commissioner Bradford's out, so I apologize for jumping in. I would've gladly passed it to you, because I know you're intimately involved.
It just came to me in the last re-drawing.
Re-district, right. So, okay. So with that said, except my apologies for that, I would've passed it right to you.
Thank you.
But saying that, I think you summarized it very well. I think the people, even the people we just heard from today that bought knowing it was going to be a park, bought on that assumption, and we protected that assumption for a lot. I know we had some discussions from when this was all going on about how to get it funded, could the state do it? And I know Speaker Corcoran did a great job, great effort, trying to like get it done. It just didn't happen. Maybe it can still happen, but I think we do need, and we do plan to do, the MSBU coming up anyway. We did wanna take a look at this, but I think at this point, from all I've heard, Commissioner Starkey, I'm ready to cancel this agenda item, put it back in, go with the MSBU. If we can get funding...
MSBU.
MSBU. And if we can get funding, we'll proceed that way to try to lessen the cost. But I think I'm happy to end it right now and just move on and give you the certainty that we're gonna go make it a park, it's gonna stay a park, we're gonna fund it, you're gonna pay for it, but we'll try to get the funding if we can.
Chair, I say call the question.
Commissioner Oakley?
I agree with you. It needs to be a park, and we don't have to build on every piece of land in the county.
Okay.
Fact of it is, I'll make the motion that we...
No, 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 no. Let's... Commissioner Starkey make that motion. Commissioner Starkey.
So I...
I'll second it.
I'll make the motion that we withdraw the surplus and proceed with the MSBU.
Second.
Do I need any more clarification in any part of that MSBU, Keith? We got... because I think we have it. Where are we with that? If you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. So just for clarification, we're teed up to pursue that, but unfortunately for FY24, we missed the assessment.
Again.
Again, yes, because of the opportunity to investigate the surplus option.
Sure.
However, we're ready to roll. We'll work with OMB, and we'll go ahead and get that started for the next budget cycle.
Okay. Good. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
All right, you have your part.[768.25][768.25](laughing)[769.25][769.25](applause)
Please, no clapping. Wave in support.[772.62][772.62](laughing)
All right.
All right. RS1.
Mr. Chair, we have a time certain. It was for 11:00.
I'll say.
Just be happy.[787.62][787.62](laughing)
We have time certens.
Mr. Chair, we have a time certain for 11:00, which is RS3.
Okay, let's do the time certain, because some of the persons go...
Mine's gotta go.
Okay, so RS3?
All right.
I'm gonna get all these down.
We can do RS3?
Yes. So for resolution number three, would Ms. Mia Watkins, Finley Watkins, and Reagan Barron, please step up to the podium? And anyone else, I guess, that is here for the lifeguards' resolution? I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 23-204, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Mia Watkins, Finley Watkins, and Reagan Barron, lifeguards with Pasco County Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Department for their lifesaving efforts at Anclot River Park. Whereas lifeguards play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of beachgoers and pool visitors, their knowledge of water safety, consistent surveillance, and ability to react quickly to potential hazards makes them an invaluable asset to our aquatics team. And whereas Mia Watkins, Finley Watkins, and Reagan Barron have been lifeguards for Pasco County Parks Recreation and Natural Resources for multiple seasons at both Sunwest Park and Anclot River Park. And whereas on Wednesday, July 19, 2023, Mia and Finley were lifeguarding at Anclot River Park when a moment of crisis emerged in the designated swim area when a visitor swimming experienced an epileptic attack. Mia and Finley swiftly initiated safety protocol and rescued the patron from the water. And whereas on August 5, 2023, Mia, Finley, and Reagan were on duty as lifeguards at Anclot River Park when a two-year-old child approached the deeper portion of the designated swim area, became submerged, and lost consciousness. And whereas lifeguards responded and found the two-year-old child unresponsive and not breathing. And whereas Mia Watkins, Finley Watkins, and Reagan Barron worked together to perform lifesaving measures, including cardiopulmonary resuscitation and rescue breathing. And whereas their quick response and immediate action resulted in a successful recovery of the young patron and a successful lifesaving situation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida... sorry. That said board hereby recognizes Mia Watkins, Finley Watkins, and Reagan Barron for their heroic efforts in saving the life of a Pasco County citizen at Anclot River Park.[950.12][950.12](applause)[951.12][951.12](audience cheering)[952.12][952.12](applause) I still have a little piece left.
A piece left?
Yes.
Done and resolved in regular session with the court president voting this day of September 19, 2023. Sorry, I couldn't get through the whole thing.
Move to approve.
They told me they saved lives. They don't like to speak, so...
Got a motion to approve?
I cannot tell you...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
I apologize. I can... Brian Taylor, Recreation Manager, I cannot tell you how frightening it is when you get that text or a call that there was an incident at a beach or a pool. So obviously, this ended in a very good outcome, and I just praise God that you three ladies were there. And we do a resolution, and we say thank you, but thank you really isn't enough. But we do thank you. It was... it takes a lot of bravery. You gotta act quickly. You gotta keep a level head when you're in those situations, and you ladies obviously did that. So we thank you so much.[1028.41][1028.41](applause)
Well, I wanna personally thank you. You know, I have... my brother was a lifeguard, and I know how tough that can be. So... and what a responsible position that is. So congratulations on you all for stepping up and serving your community in that capacity. Would you like to talk about the incident, or talk to the county commission in any way? It's a good experience, good practice.
I just wanted to say, thank you for like the recognition from us from over the summer. It was definitely a scary and a little scary opportunity, but it was definitely life-changing for all of us, and we just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yep. I certainly thank you for saving one of our citizens' lives and them being a part of our community still, because of your good works. Saying thank you doesn't seem like enough. It really does. So, from my heart, I certainly appreciate everything y'all have done to help our citizens in those areas. So, thank you.
Commissioner Whiteman?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, what are... how old are y'all?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.[1102.49][1102.49](laughing) So, to the parent, and taking on a job like being a lifeguard, you never know when. You never know you're called to service. There's a bunch of guys in white uniforms back there who live what you guys do every day. And thank you for taking on the risk, because you guys put yourself at risk too, to save others. And to the parents, if any parents out here, good job. I hope my daughter, as she gets older, takes on a job like this and becomes responsible and pays attention and cares about community and her fellow man. So ladies, thank you all.
Yeah, ladies, what a great story. I mean, Nikki and I both getting choked up over it. I mean, it's like, it's just like phenomenal, what you did, what you went through. And to take the responsibility and to execute is tremendous. Chief Perez, I think we got like three recruits possibly coming up here. Get them in the ropes, all right? But we wish you all the best and thank you. I mean, saving a life. How great is that?
Yeah.
God bless you.[1163.14][1163.14](applause)
I also wanna say, I've seen recently, I've been reading about lifeguards, and a lot of communities don't have lifeguards. And people swim at their own risk. So, you know, this is at taxpayer expense that we have lifeguards, and this... and I'm really grateful that we do.
We were one of the fortunate counties that probably had one of the most lifeguards in almost the whole state. So we're really proud of them. 35 years I've been here, and thank God for these lifeguards. We've done well. We haven't lost anyone, so we're proud of that.
Gonna be proud of that. Thank you.
All right, let's get our pictures.
You want some? I'm standing right next to all the people.
More people, come sit back.
Yeah.
We need three frames of that coming up there.
Right, right next.
Okay, everybody, right here first, please.
Way in, way, way. We gotta get things now.
Is that your mom? That's my mom over there. Oh, thank you. And her aunt.
Right here. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.[1246.41][1246.41](applause)
Yep. Ma. Come on in handy for me today.
Just a...
Turn the corner and smash into the wall in there.
I'd like to go to RS2.
Okay.
Time certain for 11:30, so it's close enough.
Okay. Mickey Sudo? Nick?
Wary.
Wary, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Let's see. So... oh my goodness, professional eating contest. Wow.[1280.41][1280.41](laughing)
Side her side.
All right. So it's Mickey Sudo and Nick Wary?
Wary.
Okay. Thank you. Resolution number 23-202, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Mickey Sudo and Nick Wary and commending them on representing Pasco County in professional eating contest worldwide. Whereas Mickey Sudo started her competitive eating career in Las Vegas when she was a student and entered in a 12-pound bowl of fo... is it fo or foo? Fa, fa, okay. Fa eating challenge. And Nick Wary had been a bodybuilder in Connecticut when he was talked into entering a donut eating contest.
Oh my goodness.[1331.14][1331.14](laughing)
And whereas Mickey and Nick moved to Pasco County several years ago and participate in approximately 20 events a year. They lead a fairly conventional life aside from the intense 15 minutes of a competition. Mickey and Nick are proud parents of Max and Mickey in... or Max and Mickey is a loving stepmom to Nick's other children, William and Sylvie. And whereas Mickey and Nick are the highest-ranked couple in history by Major League Eating, the official league that oversees professional eating contests worldwide. And whereas Mickey Sudo is ranked number three overall in the world and number one for women... wow, that's great. A nine-time Nathan's Hot Dog Eating Champion, including seven consecutive titles, a four-time Buffalo Wing Eating Champion, and a former Tamale Chicken Rib and Donut Eating Champion.[1387.64][1387.64](laughing) And whereas Nick Wary is ranked number four in the world and is a wonderful pistachios eating champion, Wings for Wish's Wing Eating Competition, and a Hard Boiled Egg Eating Competition.[1404.87][1404.87](laughing) And whereas Nick holds world records for eating 14.5 pounds of Minnesota hot dish in eight minutes, 48.5 hot dogs in 10 minutes, and 5.5 pounds of kimchi in eight minutes, and 16.5 pints of ice cream in six minutes. And Nick holds world records for eating 188 pistachios in eight minutes, 50 hard-boiled eggs in three minutes.
Stop already.[1436.33][1436.33](laughing)
Sorry. Three minutes and four seconds, and two gallons of pureed baby food.[1444.87][1444.87](laughing) And they're so tiny and fit. And whereas both have worked with Wings for Wish's as part of a wing eating and charity event that raised over, wow, $850,000 for Make-A-Wish in South Florida, with Friends of We Care to raise over $150,000 for kids to attend summer camp programs, and works with Nathan's at the hot dog eating contest every year, where 100,000 hot dogs are donated to the food banks in New York. And whereas Mickey and Nick are making Pasco County proud of continuously wishing... winning competitions and holding records in both a national and international level. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby commends Mickey Sudo and Nick Wary for representing Pasco County at competitive eating's biggest stage. Done and resolved in regular session with the court president voting this 19th day of September 2023.
Mr. Chair, move approval?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mickey and Nick, thank you guys for hanging in there through this morning and fitness in your busy schedules.
Oh, no, it's been an honor. I mean, we do... you have a lot of serious business to tend to. If we could bring a little bit of laughter and levity to your session.
The insanity of what we do isn't lost on us. But to be able to represent the community, raise copious amounts of money with our absurd skill, and bring happiness to people, that's really cool. I never thought that I'd get to, you know, travel the world and represent a great community and raise money for those in need by eating pistachios in a short period of time.[1547.14][1547.14](laughing) So I really appreciate that you've been able to... I found the love of my life and a job and a great community through an absurd talent. But I suppose it's a strange job, but it's a job.
Well, it's fun, I tell you, Mr. Chair, and so most... everybody here that knows us, 4th of July, and my family, and my wife's family especially, is our favorite holiday. So, and we have, in the past, we have large fireworks shows, and leading into our 4th of July festivities, we've watched the Nathan's Hot Dog Eating Contest as part of our day of 4th of July. So we've been watching Mickey for, I don't know, 2015 at least. And when I found out she lived in Pasco, I was like, I'm a fan. Like, there's a star. And her husband's standing next, taking on... challenging hot dogs next to Joey Chestnut, who's just a beast in the eating world. So, super excited and honored, a bit starstruck that y'all are here today, and you live in Pasco, the greatest county in Florida. So thank you for taking time to see us.
Thank you, and please don't judge us if you see a hot dog practice on our front lawn sometimes.
We try to hide that from the community maybe as much as possible, the side effects to our drive.
Don't be alarmed. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. Thank you.[1629.41][1629.41](applause)
Want to do a picture? Commissioner Oakley?
Yep. I thank you. Stay up there.
Hey, hang on, hang on. We're gonna do a picture, too.
We have something coming to you. So I thank you for representing Pasco County. It's an odd situation you represent us in, but my doctor told me not to eat those things, y'all eat.[1641.41][1641.41](laughing) I try to stay away from them so I can be here a little longer, but I'm amazed by your talents to be able to do such a thing. So thank you for that, and thank you for representing Pasco County. We appreciate it.
All right. So we'd like to come out and take a picture with you.
It'd be great.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
I can't believe you're on the show.
It's like you were supposed to be. It is? Oh, wow. But I'm also in here, I don't know how you're supposed to be in there. I have lots of questions, but I won't.
Okay, right here. Over in there. Great, thank you.
Congratulations.[1671.24][1671.24](applause)[1672.24]
So, I thank you for representing Pasco County. It's an odd situation you represent us in, but my doctor told me not to eat those things, y'all eat. I try to stay away from them so I can be here a little longer, but I'm amazed by your talents to be able to do such a thing. So thank you for that, and thank you for representing Pasco County. We appreciate it.
So we'd like to come out and take a picture with you.
That one's gonna be very memorable.
It's like when that 104-year-old lady came up who rides our bu- rode our buses in Dade City that day, do you remember? The lady that came up that we honored or walked up on our own?
Oh, yeah.
Got AM Skills over here.
Yep, we're gonna get there, we're gonna go to RS1.
Okay. The resolutions have been great, I've cried, I've laughed, this is great.
Full range of emotions.
It is. All right, Mr. Gorig.
It's your turn.
Motion to reconsider?
You get several approvals on that.
I'll go ahead and read your resolution. Resolution number 23-208, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Robert Gorig for his years of dedication, of dedicated service to Pasco County and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas Bob, or sorry, as Robert, Budget Bob, Gorig, was hired as the, was hired as the Budget Director for the Office of Management and Budget in Pasco County on October 5, 2015, after previously being the Director of Budget, Strategy, and Communication for the city of Coral Springs, Florida. And whereas Robert has been the Office of Management and Budget team for his entire career with Pasco County. And whereas throughout his career with Pasco County, Robert has proven himself to be an invaluable asset to those he served daily, whether it be coworkers or citizens with his positive and friendly demeanor, a whistle tune in the halls, or a dad joke to get a budget meeting started. And whereas Robert's outstanding work ethic was on display and evidenced daily, providing budget and oversight and fiscal guidance to Pasco County's leaders. And whereas Robert worked tirelessly during storm events and could be found in the emergency operations center on the night shift as the Finance Section Chief during catastro- cad- ca- 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 I can't even say that word, catastrophes, there you go, and disasters that struck Pasco County during his tenure. And whereas Robert was not only a director, but was also a leader, mentor, and most importantly, a friend to those who worked with him, leaving behind a legacy of transparency, trust, and collaboration in budgeting. And whereas Robert was a leader for not only Pasco County, but also for the Florida Sterling Council in his roles as Master Examiner, Chair of the Sterling Exam Committee, Results Lead, Team Lead, and Trainer. He has received recognitions with the Examiner Excellence Award in 2014. And whereas in October 6, 2023, Robert will officially retire from the Pasco County, I'm sorry, that's not my office, from the Pasco County Office of Budget and Management, where he will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby expresses its deepest appreciation for Robert Gorig for his eight years of dedicated service to the citizens of Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 19th day of September 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioner Oakley.
Yes, I actually don't really call him Robert, I call him, I call him, you know Bob the Builder? This is Bob the Budget Man, so, Budget Bob, as I call him. And he's done a great job. The time I've been here and been able to share numbers with him about the county and how much we got and what we do with it and how we protect it and do the right thing for our citizens, I certainly appreciate all that you've done for our citizens in Pasco County while you've been here, so.
Thank you.
One other thing, he's, he's a, he's a, of course, a good husband, a father, a grandfather. He has a slight problem in showing the grandkids how to do trampoline. I don't know if he's wearing a boot today, but yeah, I think he sees the boot. So he taught them how not to do the trampoline, so, but I certainly appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Whiteman.
Well, thank you. Well, shucks, Budget Bob, this is my first ride through this process, but, but no, congratulations, congratulations on your retirement. And I wish you well, so appreciate our time working together over this last year and wish you all the best into the future.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Starkey.
Well, and it's been a pleasure, I mean, you're such a professional, how long have you been here with us?
Eight years.
Yeah. Gonna miss your calm demeanor and professionalism. So I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful plans in the future. And are you happy and sad that you're leaving us, like both?
Absolutely. See a new career opportunity when I saw those competitive eaters here.
Mike Carbella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, I just want to say thank you for all the wonderful years of service you've provided to the county. Known you since you've gotten here, and I want to say it's been a pleasure getting to know you and your team even more now that I've changed jerseys, going through my, my now, my, you know, first round here as county administrator here. But you've always projected just that quiet confidence, kind of what Commissioner Starkey was alluding to, and more importantly, wisdom as we go through this. So you will be missed, but truly just know that, just appreciate everything that you've done for us. Thank you.
Bob, I'd like to say, in your eight years, what you've done has been amazing. From when you, before you came here, there were still battles, every meeting, almost like the last meeting we just had, with people worried about the budget, going through it and dissecting it down. We haven't had any, anyone for the past several years, because the way we work, you work to get everything in line, set up ahead of time, gone through the budgets with your tremendous team, isolating where the savings are, where we need to go, and how we can add the things in one by one, and show them in a very open manner, very early on in the process, so every commissioner gotta look at it, and every citizen gotta look at what we're doing, why we're doing it. And I think that inspired a lot of confidence in the citizens in what we're doing as functioning as a government. I think that led to the great success we have with the Go Bonds. I mean, I don't, I think the rest of the commissioners with myself, we put it out there, we showed it to the citizens, and they said, you know what? We want to have these services, we want to make our quality of life better. So as a county that pretty much has to give city services, what you've done for us and the citizens is actually be able to get them out there to show them what we're gonna go do with the money and then execute it. Penny for Pasco, long before you got here, we did that, we executed that well, and I think that transposed with that debt going forward. But you with just a regular budget has been a tremendous success. I do think you're too young to retire, but I think you're too old to do the trampoline thing, so you gotta learn. Get some golf clubs, keep it simple, and you'll be all right. But again, I just greatly appreciate your tremendous work. Anytime we've had a question, even to the last meeting, you've been able to answer it clearly. You've helped me many times, talking about budget items, how to go forward with something. So you're greatly gonna be missed, your impact in just eight years has been phenomenal, but I know you set up a good team behind you, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Like to say a few words.
It's been a privilege to work with this amazing team, past few years, for the, on behalf of the citizens of Pasco County. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take a picture.
You want me to draw me down?
Yes, that's a picture. And Bob, you have your team here as well? Let's get Bob's team up here too.
We got everybody, right here first, please, everyone? Perfect, thank you.
5:15, make sure you're here. We're not done with you yet.
Who is next?
Resolution four.
AM Skills, RS4. Tom, come on up.
Anyone here from AM Skills, please come to the podium.
Somebody has two.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution, resolution number 23-206, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing the opening of the AM Skills Workforce Training Center. Whereas manufacturing stands as a cornerstone of the United States economic and national strength, contributing significantly to job creation, innovation, and overall stability. And whereas Pasco County acknowledges that a vibrant manufacturing sector plays a significant role in our community for both industries and families, and recognizes that the strength of the manufacturing relies upon the recruitment, education, and training of individuals equipped with necessary expertise to cultivate a skilled workforce. And whereas AM Skills is a Florida not-for-profit organization established as an economic development initiative to help manufacturers recruit, plan, and sustain a skilled workforce with a mission of transforming lives and strengthening communities through workforce training and apprenticeships for youth, adults, veterans, and uniquely abled, I'm sorry, the uniquely abled and economically disadvantaged. And whereas the first AM Skills Workforce Training Center, a 14,000-square-foot advanced manufacturing training facility constructed in Holliday, is now open, addressing the workforce recruitment and skills training needs for manufacturing, public works, utilities, and other industries in the Tampa Bay area, by providing training opportunities for persons with little to no skills or experience, employers, and those with experience who are ready to advance their skills in areas of maintenance, machinery, mac-
Mechatronics.
Thank you, mechatronics. You knew exactly what I was gonna stumble on. Robotics, supply chain logistics, and Industry 4.0. And whereas the new AM Skills Workforce Training Center will not only train residents, but it will also draw people from all over the country for Amatrol Technology, Technical Training, and Universal Robotics Equipment Training, resulting in additional dollars to Pasco County's tourism industry and other local businesses. And whereas this new facility will be home to the Pasco County Economic Development Council's Smart Start Incubator, offering local Pasco County entrepreneurs the support they need to successfully start their new businesses. And whereas to celebrate the grand opening of this new facility in conjunction with National Manufacturing Day, AM Skills and the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce will host the 10th Annual Manufacturing Day Dinner on Wednesday, October 4, 2023, at the new center. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby designates the AM Skills Workforce Training Center as one of the premier workforce training establishments within Pasco County, and celebrate AM Skills accomplishments as it continues to transform the lives of members within the community. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 19th day of September 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Starkey, today's the day you get two resolutions.
I know, today I have two.
You got two good ones.
But this is, this had to be done before October 4, so, welcome Tom and Alex, we're so happy to have you on board. And I just want to thank all the county staff who have helped us to get this building open and all the support. We are really making a difference in the Tampa Bay area for many people and many companies, and I think we should all be really proud of what's going on here. And I'll turn the mic over to Tom and definitely want to introduce our new employee and partner and talk about what's happening.
Thank you, Commissioner Starkey, I wanted to say a few words. Wait, I forgot my notes, hold on. Jeff, can you bring the notes up?
Oh, I love it.
Wow.
That's awesome.
That's a delivery.
So this is our other addition to AM Skills. My name is Tom Madonna, the President and CEO of AM Skills, and by my side is Alex Anzalone. He is our new COO, he comes from a vast background in, with the university systems, as President of several colleges, but has built programs like ours. So we are ready to take AM Skills to not 2.0, but 4.0 and beyond. So we're very excited about where we are today. As you mentioned, we've got a new 14,000-square-foot building that's gonna be open, and basically it's gonna help people who know nothing about manufacturing and you just want to come in and learn how to use electricity, or fix a light switch, all the way up to extremely advanced skills in things like mechatronics, which is fixing and building machines, by the way. So we created AM Skills over nine years ago with workforce in mind, economic development and its initiative to help our manufacturers not only recruit, but keep skilled labor. And so that's the reason we were actually created. But as we said, our mission is transforming lives, so we're literally helping people who have no idea these careers exist to actually be introduced to these careers, we're placing in these jobs, we've helped hundreds of people secure jobs, as well we've been able to bring in millions of dollars of grants right here into Pasco County and to our programs. In addition, we are flying people in as well who are learning how to use equipment, teachers and instructors from all over the country on how to learn to do training of equipment and things like that. So lastly, I just wanted to say, we couldn't do it, I want to recognize a few people. Obviously, I want to start, if I could, with Commissioner Starkey, who's a co-founder of AM Skills as well, a board member, and has just been very supportive. But also the commission to you all for your support, for being behind us, the county administrator, we want to thank you, obviously, for, and all of the county departments, as you mentioned, it's been a long haul to get us here. I didn't mention, we've got four and a half acres, 14,000-square-foot building, fully renovated, and we're 90% debt-free. So as a nonprofit, that's extremely a great way to get started. Congressman Bill Arakis, who's helped us to secure funding with HUD, Dr. James Gills, who's been a great supporter of ours, and obviously the Department of Commerce, Florida Department of Commerce, the Florida Department of Education, and many others, which you're gonna learn about if you come to our October 4 opening, and I want to close with inviting you to come to that, and thank you all again for your support.
Thank you. All right, let's take a photo.
Say a few words? You gonna say a few words, or?
No, that was good.
Well, I'd like to say, Tom, you've done a phenomenal job coming down the line. I know, I think Commissioner Starkey, you and I, I think we were down at the coastal caisson building years ago, right? And you were in the school board, I wasn't here, and we were like pushing along, and Commissioner Starkey, the work you've done to help promote them as well nationally has been phenomenal too, statewide, et cetera, so.
We are known nationally, if not internationally, actually.
Yeah, so your leadership there has been tremendous, but, and Tom, how you've just gone to grow and do it so fiscally responsibly has been tremendous, so you're doing a phenomenal job helping our citizens and just creating jobs for us and lives for people, so thank you. Commissioner Whiteman.
I'll just, sure, I'll just piggyback on to, we had some comments earlier, but for our residents to succeed, to succeed, and endeavors like yours to succeed, we need to have job-creating properties. And so we need to, as we go into these afternoon sessions, as I continue to beat my job and protect and stand and support our job-creating properties, so we can have a great relationship and keep moving, moving in the right direction, so thank you guys.
Commissioner Oakley.
Yes, done a great job, you've come a long way from where I first met you and all of them, driving around with a truck and a trailer, you know, doing what you do the best, so I appreciate everything you're doing, I enjoyed seeing your little friend bring you the note. And I went out and visited with St. Leo University not long ago, and they have a robotics degree, I think they offer now, and it's pretty amazing when you're talking to a robot and it talks back to you, so, pretty amazing stuff, and a lot of things can happen from that, so I appreciate it.
Commissioner Whiteman.
One more, one more thing, go back, Tom, Commissioner Starkey and Ralph's here, going back to the Speaker Weatherford days, isn't that when you brought that forward, however long ago?
Yep.
So Ralph, Ralph is here, so, you know, just give a grin to Ralph too, on this one.
We wouldn't have started if it wasn't for Speaker Weatherford's sprinkle at the end of the year. And yeah, thanks Ralph, and you were in his office then? So that's what got us started, was that 1.2, actually it ended at 1.15 mil from the state. And boy, it's been, I will tell you, it's been, we, Tom and I laugh, like one step forward, three steps back, I don't know, we, I've been accused of all kinds of things with this, I was personally profiting, and we, we have, we have, we have seen a lot through this journey, but, you know, we stayed positive and we stayed on our mission, and we wanted to show everybody that this kind of program can coexist with the colleges and the other programs that are out there. I tell them, we're here to polish your apple, and not everyone wants to go to a two-year program to get a job. And lots of people who are currently employed want to be upskilled while they're working, and we just have that ability to be flexible and non-bureaucratic, and that's what industry needs. So we're industry-led, and I'm just really proud of it, I really am. And I want those jobs back from China and some other places, so it's kind of a patriotic thing for me. I think it's national security that we know how to make our own things, so it's important. I appreciate all of the support.
If I could mention one final point, this is actually the start of Manufacturing Month, so for, this is basically a time for people to learn about this industry. I didn't mention, we have 160 kids in our manufacturing program at Anklod High School now, so it's growing. Let's go RS five, Chief Casson.
It's your time. Chief, I'll go ahead and read the resolution first.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution number twenty-three dash two zero three, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Fire Chief Scott Casson for his distinguished and dedicated service of thirteen years to Pasco County Fire Rescue, and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas Chief Scott Casson was hired on August sixteenth, 2010, promoted to Fire Chief on August twenty-eighth, 2012, and has led numerous achievements throughout his thirteen-year career with Pasco County. And whereas Chief Casson helped establish the new consolidation communications center, public safety communications, created fire rescue social media pages, implemented the first online mobile computer terminal, MCT, and provided internet access to all employees. And whereas Chief Casson implemented the Rapid Sequence Intubation, RSI, medical advancement program, implemented the first automatic mutual aid agreement with Hernando County and Fire Rescue, began the Critical Incident Stress Management Program, initiated the first chaplaincy? Chaplaincy?
Chaplaincy.
Chaplaincy, thank you, program, implemented an agreement with Pasco Hernando State College to begin training classes in the training center, and led Pasco County Fire Rescue to begin awarding, to be awarded the Mission Life EMS Gold Award. And whereas Chief Casson implemented the Special Operations Team, Squad One, migrated to the new P-25 compliant radio system, implemented DOBIs, the department's first accelerated detection canine to receive his badge, implemented Firehouse RMS software, approved the prototype designs of fire stations that placed emphasis on the health and safety of fire rescue personnel, and implemented shift commanders for the first time. And whereas Chief Casson implemented the first group of blue card certification graduates and EMS supervisors, implemented the Six Week Kelly Day, the Pulse Point app, and the Purvis Dispatching and Station Alerting for Station Thirty-eight to go live, implemented the merger of the Zephyr Hills Fire Department, and successfully led the department during COVID-19. And whereas Chief Casson created a closest unit dispatch agreement with the city of Newport Ritchie, I'm sorry, with the city of Port Ritchie, implemented an inspection fee schedule for commercial occupancies, became accredited through the Commission of Accreditation of Ambulance Services, CAAS, began socialization of paramedic-only personnel to implement peak-hour units, and offered Pasco County's first in-house fire academy for single-certified paramedic candidates. And whereas throughout his tenure with Pasco County Fire Rescue, Chief Casson exhibited integrity, passion, and rigor for the job. He served the team members and residents of Pasco County with a profound approach to public safety. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby expresses its sincere gratitude to Chief Scott Casson for the years he has devoted to protecting the lives, health, welfare, and property of the citizens of Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this nineteenth day of September, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chief, I want to say, since you came to Pasco County, you've done a phenomenal job. When I think back to years ago, being a lot of volunteers that came together, that we brought into the system, Chief Lapinto, what a phenomenal leader he was as well, and how you picked up and just kind of added all these programs in. And it doesn't even include some other ones that should be in there as well. One of them that comes to mind is, there was one time we were looking at medicines, and how we kind of changed the way we stocked the medicines so that we didn't have them expiring, but we kind of like made sure they were turning over and using them to save the taxpayers a whole bunch of money. So all the things you've done, you've elevated the program. The key part that I think strikes all of us is the safety for our people. Now, I know when we first started talking about building new stations to upgrade our places where the people were going to be staying, that safety just became part of it. Between washing, getting the machines washed, to be able to wash the machines, to be able to throw it, clean it, to be able to improve the exhaust systems, which we just got a great grant for, which I'll actually, I pulled the item today just to kind of celebrate the troupe that we made to get that money to being recognized. The fire stations, phenomenal, we're getting recognized as being the best fire stations in the nation. The fire trucks, as you told me, we had the fire station, the ambulances, all being wanted to be looked at by other people because of the changes we made, that the vendors wanted to take them out to these shows so they could see, here's what Pasco County's doing. So for what you've done to elevate Pasco County, to improve the quality of life for our citizens, our firefighters, what you've done has been phenomenal. I think you, too, are too young to retire, but so be it. Commissioner Oakley.
Yes, sir. Chief, it's been a great time working with you, working by your side. I actually tried to, I think ninety-five percent of, whether it be a groundbreaking or ribbon-cutting on a fire station, I was always trying to be there, because I appreciate the work you've done and all the firefighters that we have in the county. And I respect them very much for what they do for us each and every day. And the building of the stations in between other stations to cut those times, those response times down, has been great. I worked with you closely with, which now is the largest city in Pasco County after the census, Zephyr Hills, when we brought those two stations in to be part of Pasco County. There was a lot of concerns and a lot of worries on those employees, but when I run into them today in different areas, I ask them how they're doing, they say things are great, and they really fell into doing the right thing. I mean, whether you're at Zephyr Hills or Newport Ritchie firefighter, when you come over in Pasco, you have the same mindset, there's nothing changed, so. But those folks did a good job, and they certainly appreciate being a part of Pasco County now. So they were fearful at first, but they really said it worked out the way we told them it would, and it has, so very appreciative for that happening, and all the work that you've done for Pasco County in your time, so thank you.
Commissioner Whitman.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Chief, I don't know, coming onboard, all these top lieutenants are retiring, Budget Bob, Chief Casson, the health, what's the health guy retired, Mr. Napier, who else am I missing? Rob Maron, retiring, I mean, everybody's retiring. No, I'm just kidding, but hey, thank you for spending time with me since I've come onboard, and again, congratulations on your retirement, and hope you all have a lot of fun and stress-free, and enjoying, good to see you again.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Starkey.
Well, I didn't know Rob, I didn't know he was retiring, too.
Not today, not today, but very soon.
Say that.
We're going to talk him out of it.
That's already. Chief, it's been a pleasure to work with you over these years. I just remember working with Chief Lapinto just a little bit, so you must have come on right when I came on, so it's been a journey, and you certainly have elevated our fire department to national prominence, so I appreciate that. And I know, I know we've had struggles as a fast-growing county, keeping up with the demands of the challenges that growth put on us, and I thank you for your leadership, and I hope that you have a wonderful retirement, or whatever comes next, because here's another young one retiring with probably another career still to go, so best of luck to you.
Thank you so much. Mike?
Yeah, just to add on, Scott, with the flavor of what's been said here, nothing really much more to add, other than just as the old saying goes, right, we stand on the shoulders of giants. And I can say that your shoulders are big enough to have provided really, truly, a foundation for the agency going forward, so you should be proud, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. I would like to add a few words.
Well, I don't have anything prepared. No, I just, you know, I've been up here many times over the years, and it's hard to believe that thirteen years has gone by already, you know, it feels like I was just up here. You mentioned August twenty-eighth, I forgot that day, that's actually my birthday, so that was a special day back in that year. But, you know, it's certainly an honor to be up here, and I wanted to thank each and every one of you for your support over the years. You know, every time I came up here with an item before the board, you know, I can say with confidence that you all or the board voted unanimously, you know, in favor of whatever I brought, and that's just a testament to the great working relationship that we have as an organization with the board, and we're very appreciative of that. And that's not meant to put any stress on Chief Perez back there moving forward, but I also would be remiss if I didn't thank, you know, my team that backed me up throughout all those years, you know, a bunch of them are here today, you know, Rob, you know, you were my right hand for a long time, and Brian, and Ryan, and Jeremy, and Justin, who are my immediate deputy chiefs that supported me, and then all the division chiefs, and there are several of them here as well, and their supporting staff. And then just as equally important, you know, the eight hundred other people that I represent in this organization, I couldn't be more proud of what they've been able to accomplish, what we've been able to accomplish in all those years. And I want to thank also all the other county departments that I've had the opportunity to work with, you know, the county administration, I was able to have a seat at the table for about five years or so, working with different administrations, and I wanted to, you know, thank you for the opportunity and the ability to do that. You mentioned a lot of accomplishments, I don't know, some of that stuff, when I think back, it's like, man, that's really amazing that we were able to do all of that. I know there was a lot more, and there's still a lot more to go. As you mentioned, Commissioner Starkey, that, you know, this is a growing county, and there's a lot of challenges that come with that, but, you know, we weathered the COVID-19 storm, and there's, I'm sure there's going to be more challenges in the future, but there's a great team that's still here behind me, and I feel confident that we'll get it done. So, and I just realized that I'm the only thing standing between lunch and everybody enjoying that, so I am, I'm done. I just want to, you know, wish you continued success in the future, so thank you again.
Well, Chief, and again, I'm glad you touched on COVID, I was going to get back to that if someone else did, but you got us through COVID. And prior to that, when we had the GO bonds going on, your leadership, as you improved us in so many different ways, led the voters to say, we want to see better fire protection, better fires safe, you want to protect our firefighters. That leadership, that performance you had before, led to that great success, and that's put us in a great position to protect our citizens better, so thank you for all your service.
Yes, thank you so much.
So we've got a big crew down there, so maybe I want to stay back up here, I'll just go down and present.
And then, Commissioner, I'd like to do C-eight, because we have three city council people and a city manager here, so if we can get through that one quick. We don't want them to have to come back.
Good, that takes the heat off me, then.
Commissioner Starkey, there's two, C-eight, C-nine.
Well, we can take them both up.
Just let them know. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your help. Who's doing it, the chair's doing it, so?
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner, for the fine work, I appreciate it.
Have fun.
Yeah. Signing to do to. What's supposed to be during lunch? I'm like, am I going to eat? I might be cracking this up.
Someone on this side?
Lots of them.
Yeah.
Okay. This one first, please, everybody? And then the camera. The real camera. Awesome, thank you.
All right. Thank you. [applause]
Can we stop that closing, too, right, the bond closings during lunch?
Which one were we?
I thought so. Right?
No, you gotta do.
Oh, no, I'm just letting you know, we also have a bond closing at lunchtime.
I pulled C-eight, C-nine, because I wanted discussion on it, it's twelve oh seven. I've got some paperwork I've got to do and other things, so I think we should carry that after lunch. We can do it first thing.
Time's certain, at one thirty?
We'll do it at one thirty, we'll do that first before we do other stuff.
Okay.
All right?
I'd be happy to.
So we're adjourned for lunch.
Okay. Joe, it's nine a.m. Start.